Chair Fields, can you hear us?
I sure can. Can you hear me?
Wonderful, yes.
Excellent. I have it at six fifty-eight, so we'll get started in a couple of minutes. I have that at seven P M. And so, welcome to this regular meeting of the City of San Mateo Park and Recreation Commission. This Wednesday evening, January third, twenty twenty-four. I now call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. Ready? Begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Giovanna, please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair Fields. Commissioner Chiapi? Commissioner Trap?
Present.
Commissioner Witcher?
Present.
Vice Chair Wolnick?
Present.
Chair Fields?
Present.
Youth Commissioner Jolnicker?
Here.
Youth Commissioner Lee? Thank you. We do have a quorum.
Excellent. The next several items are ceremonial in nature. I'd like as chair to just take a moment of personal privilege and say thank you to my fellow commissioners for seeing me on the screen as opposed to there with you in the room. I much would have preferred to be there with you in the room, but some a family illness keeps me in Southern California a little bit longer, so here to be helpful. So, item number one. We are introducing a new commissioner, Peter Witcher, I believe is how you pronounce your last name. I hope I'm saying it correctly. I will learn to say it as the chair of this fine commission. So, we're introducing and welcoming Peter. If you'd like to say a few words, now would be the time to do so.
Sure, Sad. Thank you. It's a pleasure and a privilege to serve on this commission. We have lived in San Mateo for thirty-seven years, raised two children here, one with special needs, and through all phases of life. The programs and the parks have been open to us, open to people of any stage of life, of all abilities. And I hope to contribute to keep them that way and to maybe improve them.
Excellent. Well, welcome, Commissioner Witcher. We really were looking forward to working with you and hearing your perspective on this commission. The second ceremonial item we have this evening is something that's been kind of a long time coming and that we're, I'll say, I'm personally very excited about. We're welcoming and introducing our two new youth commissioners. I think as we all know, this commission is going to be the first commission, hopefully not the last, to welcome youth commissioners who are somewhere between the ages of fourteen and eighteen to represent the youth perspective, give advice and guidance and feedback to us as commissioners and to really represent their peers as well as themselves on our commission. And so, we'd love for the two new youth commissioners, maybe you could tell us your name and maybe where you go to school. And if you'd like, maybe something that we want to be on the Parks and Rec Commission.
I'm Thomas Jolnicker. I'm currently a junior at Hillsdale High School, and it's truly an honor and a privilege to be making history on the Parks and Rec Commission. Something that kind of drew me to this job, I'm kind of just like, I've always been a big fan of San Mateo Parks in general. I've lived here since I was like a baby, and they have a special place in my heart, of course, and I truly just want to like help, like, you know, give my input, give my feedback as someone who's been a part of this community for a long time. And I don't know what this position, I don't know what will happen, but I'm really looking forward to it.
Hi, I'm Serena Lee. I'm a current senior at Hillsdale High School. It is truly an honor to serve in the first few county states for City of San Mateo Parks and Recreation. With this position, I aim to project underrepresented voices of the youth. I look forward to working with many others, promise to address our city's issues and make our environment safer, more inclusive, and enjoyable. With parks, it's really just a community-based foundation that is really important and just bringing us all together. And I really hope to emphasize the importance of parks recreation.
Excellent. Well, we're glad that you're here and we're excited to work together and see how we can accomplish more great things for our parks and recreation activities in the City of San Mateo. Ah, a third ceremonial item. It's, we're in good company. Some wonderful new people joining us. We are now introducing and welcoming the new Parks and Rec Deputy Director Marie Silva. Marie would, I'm not sure. Is Marie here with us?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you very much.
Introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about where you're coming from.
I have been in public service for twenty-five years. I actually started my career as a nine-one-one dispatcher with the San Jose Police Department. So, twenty years in the nine-one-one environment in various positions and fields, not only with the San Jose Police Department, but also with San Mateo Police Department. With that being said, I ended up bridging that gap and going over to Public Works and became their facilities and fleet manager. And since then, I've been promoted and joining this Parks and Rec team and looking forward to working with all of you and moving the needle forward.
Excellent. Well, we're the best commission and parks are, it's true. And parks are the gem of the City of San Mateo. So, you've really landed in a great spot, Marie. And when I'm back in San Mateo, I will reach out to you to more personally welcome you, but we're glad that you're part of our team and really welcome to all three of the new commissioners as well. I will reach out to you as well when I'm back in San Mateo. We are holding meetings in hybrid mode. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. If you would wish to make a public comment in person at the meeting, complete a request to speak form and submit that to the recording secretary. To join the Zoom meeting by clicking on the link at the top of the agenda, use the raise your hand button to be called on at the appropriate time. Please unmute yourself when called upon. Phone invitation in participation can be done by calling four oh eight six three eight zero nine six eight with the conference ID eight five three one six two seven five seven nine three, passcode two zero seven five five eight. Press star nine to raise your hand to be called on and star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Okay. Item number four, approval of the regular meeting minutes from the November first, twenty twenty-three meeting. Do I have a motion and a second?
I make a motion.
Excellent. Excellent. Giovanna, please call the roll.
I'll be happy to Chair Fields. Commissioner Chiapi?
Hi.
Commissioner Trap?
Hi.
Commissioner Witcher?
Hi.
Vice Chair Wolnick?
Hi.
Chair Fields?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is passed.
Excellent. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the commission at this time. State law prevents us from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is limited to a total of fifteen minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda. Giovanna, do we have any public comment either on Zoom or in person? Not for an agendized item?
Chair Fields, we do have members of the public, but no hands raised at this time.
Excellent. On that note, we will then move on to, I will close public comments and we will move on to item number five. Intergenerational community building, and there is a presentation from staff. Just because we have some new folks in the room, I'll just let everyone know. There will be a staff presentation. There will be an opportunity for commissioners to ask questions. Then there will be an opportunity for public comment, and then there will be a return to the commission to make additional comments. And I'll just remind everyone, this is an informational item. There's no action that necessarily needs to be taken on it. But I imagine it may bring about some ideas, and so we look forward to this presentation.
Perfect. Thank you, Chair Fields. I'd like to invite up two of our staff that are in the audience, Dan Hibson and Adeline Jones. And they are staff at the Senior Center Community Services Supervisor Hibson and Community Services Coordinator Adeline Jones. So, take it away, y'all.
Thank you, Joanne. And we are happy to be here and to present this presentation to you. Again, my name's Dan Hibson. I'm the Senior Services Supervisor, and this is Adeline Jones. And we are doing our presentation on intergenerational programming. Okay, there's our introduction, our titles again. And I think we can go on to slide right here. We're going to define what is intergenerational programming? The intentional bringing together of individuals from different stages of life for the purpose of fostering meaningful interactions gained from new perspectives. The City of San Mateo Age Friendly Action Plan identified intergenerational community building to be foundational and paving the path to an age-friendly city. And then we'll move on to the next one, the Age Friendly Action Plan. Through the Age Friendly Action Plan, the city has a goal to implement more intergenerational programs and opportunities over the next two years. The Age Friendly Task Force, along with the Parks and Recreation Staff, Library Staff, and other partners will work toward building a solid base of spectrum programs that target multiple age groups for years to come. And then we'll move on to the next slide here, which is why intergenerational programs. Intergenerational connections assist all age groups in increasing self-esteem, sense of purpose, usefulness, and connection of the cycle of life in the community. They also promote intergenerational learning through sharing of skills, knowledge, and experience between generations. And then, Addie, you're going to take it away. You have the next one here.
So, we've actually implemented some intergenerational events in the past. One of the events that has been held previously was a game event, which the Youth Activities Council, which I'm the advisor for, held an event at the Senior Center where they played games with seniors. It was a really nice event because it was actually pretty well-attended because there was twenty-five participants, about half being seniors and the half being teens. At this event, they played chess, billiards, and some video games even, and there was even more than that, but that was just a little taste of what was happening. Another one is Tech Days. So, at the Senior Center, they regularly have a tech info class, but this was specifically run by volunteers that were younger, that helped seniors with their programs and any technology they brought from home. Lastly, is a preschool performance. So, what's great is we actually have a city preschool that they brought those preschoolers to the senior for their lunch, and they sang songs, did performances, and even for some of the holidays, did little holiday cards and handed out to the seniors themselves. Now, there's actually some things that are already scheduled, and one of them is teens teach tech, much like the senior program, but this one specifically more focused on the teens teaching the seniors on their programs. They're going to bring in, you know, commonly-used technology and hopefully make it fun. There's going to be different seats, hopefully, and seniors can bring iPads and things like that. And the other program is a summer camp social event. So, Beresford has a summer camp right across the street from the Senior Center. So, we're going to actually take the summer camp and have them walk across the street, enjoy ice cream, play games, and socialize with the seniors there and hopefully build some friendships.
All right. Future considerations. So, these are some ideas that we have, and we do want some feedback on these ideas. The first idea, which actually is, the date has been scheduled, but we want to open it up for feedback and ideas and suggestions because we are open to modifying it to best meet the needs of the community. So, this is the Wellness Fair. It's a family-focused event, but it particularly focuses on senior wellness, and that goes beyond physical health. Including, this includes mental health, nutrition, social connections, et cetera. Another idea we have is you bring your grandchild to lunch. This is a program. We have a very popular nutrition program that we provide lunches at the Senior Center on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday throughout the year, and at the King Community Center on Tuesdays and Thursdays. One of the ideas would be to bring your grandchild or relative to lunch from a different generation, and again, to promote social connections, you know, and enjoy family time together while bonding with other seniors and members of different cultures and other generations. Number three on my list here is the Family Feud Night. This is an idea where seniors would be the captains of the team, and it might be a tournament, a one-night event, or a class where the seniors would be the captains, and they would play against other families where seniors from other families would be the captains, and they would either rotate if it was a four-week program or be a tournament held in one night or over the weekend. And we are, well, I have committed to being a president, whether the forty-niners are playing or not, for the Super Bowl viewing party. This idea is in the works. However, my commitment has been made, and we would love your feedback on that. I will be at the Senior Center, but we would love your feedback on how to best make that work and promote connections through the different generations. So, I think that is it for future considerations, Addie.
It's time, yeah, yeah.
You got it.
So, some other ideas that we have are a pickleball or slash and cornhole tournament where families can come and play against each other, maybe with a small awards or prizes, and this could be held at an event or an event itself. Another one is Art Nights, much similar to Paint Night, as you guys probably commonly heard, but this would be a focus on bringing in people together, painting. Another one is a pen pal program. We actually have multiple after-school programs that already happen throughout the city and pretty common seniors that come to our Senior Center and exchanging their names and writing back and forth to each other, maybe even digitally to kind of introduce some more learning together. And at the end, they would have a pen pal party, hopefully, and meet in person for the first time. Lastly, is a cooking class. We actually already have a cooking class that happens pretty regularly for enrichment for our elementary school-aged kids. And we would invite the seniors to come volunteer at those classes, maybe bring in a recipe that they know and support the kids in learning how to become better cooks themselves. And what is your guys' thoughts when you think of intergenerational? We would love to hear your guys' ideas because that's why we're here for you. And what did you like and what did you not like? And let us know.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you. Maybe you can leave it on this, oh, yep, leave it on that slide for a moment. So, let's take comments from the commissioners, and then we'll open up for public comment. Actually, I should say questions from the commissioners. How about we hear from Vice Chair Wolnick first?
I guess my only question is, it looked like there is a lot of ideas of bringing kids to seniors. Is there, I mean, the cooking class maybe is the one that brings the seniors to the kids. Is there any more thought on that, or is there a particular reason to bring the kids to the seniors for everything?
It's a good question. I think it's kind of based on, we, it's a little easier for us to have, we already have the kids in a lot of programs, and so bringing them to the seniors seems a little easier, and it we're asking less of someone because seniors, then we're expecting them to drive or get to where the kids are. And it's more of a field trip, which makes it a little easier from that point.
You do bring up a good point, and perhaps we can consider ideas like the seniors meeting the kids at the park. For example, at the Senior Center across the street, they could walk over to Beresford and meet the kids there, and we could put activities on where that also, you know, encourages exercise. So, that's a pretty good point and a valid one. So, we don't always have to bring the kids to them. We can bring them to the kids.
I think one of the only struggles I could see is that some of our facilities are licensed, and so bringing people that are volunteers without being fingerprinted and such is kind of harder versus them going out to a facility.
Lots to consider.
Yeah. That was it for me. Thanks.
Commissioner Chiapi, any questions?
I really like this program. It's really great. I have a lot of friends who are seniors, and just to share a little bit from my personal life, after the pandemic, some of them were very isolated. But one thing I noticed is that what always brought light to their faces is when they came around. So, I think this is a really good program, and I know there's a lot of planning that has to go through it, but I really, really appreciate it because I've seen how children are really helps of seniors around San Mateo. One question I have is what age range of children?
So, it's intergenerational. So, it just, that could be various generations. So, it doesn't necessarily mean seniors to kids, you know, and kids of a certain age, like toddlers, three-to-five-year-olds, the seniors, et cetera. It's just people from different generations coming together. So, a lot of it, the focus is because of the current program, you know, we have a lot of seniors and for kids of certain ages, but we're not confined to that. We can go outside of that, but with, just to expand on your thought or your sentiment, I've experienced the same thing. I'm relatively, I'm not new to the city. I've been with the city for quite a long time, but to the Senior Center. And I've experienced anytime, example, last week, we had a mother and her child from a school bring holiday cards to the seniors, and their faces lit up. It was a different kind of joy that I've experienced a few times. Another time is when someone came and played music during the lunch hour. So, it's a very valid sentiment, and it does bring a lot of happiness to the seniors. So, you make a very good point, and you emphasize something that I've seen, but you really hammered it home for future considerations. Thank you.
Have you thought about like storytelling by the seniors to the kids?
We have now.
No.
That's a great idea, and I actually, I mean, Addie, you can, you know, add your own thoughts of this, but it's, that gives the perspective, and that's kind of the idea is to have the perspective of a different generation and how life was lived and how life's currently being lived, and then both kind of learning from one another. But that's a phenomenal way to do it. We would have to explore how to set that up, but I love the thought.
And what's great is that would also be something the library could do too. I think that's, they're the best opportunity for something like that. I know that my Youth Activities Council also went to the library and did readings of children's books to kids, and that was a really great program as well, and that was a great partnership with the library.
Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Trap, any questions?
A couple of questions. So, thank you for the presentation. It's great. So, what
So one of them you have on there, and I'm gonna try to remember the ones that you had on the list, but one was bring your kid, your grandkid to lunch, and then you had one that was a cooking class. So my first thing would bring your kid to lunch, I think, kind of goes back to what's the follow-up or what's the outcome or expectation you have for that luncheon? Because what's your kind of idea of having the excitement and enjoyment of them wanting to come back? Because you'd kind of think about going and spending time with your, your mom or your grandmother at lunch, and you just kind of get bored, and you're like, okay, that was great to have lunch, but, you know. And so what, what's the engagement, what's the activity, or what's the incentive for them to really engage and wanna come back and do it again? So I think having something that is an interaction, something that is for them to do together. Maybe it is, you know, a bingo, not a bingo, but like a kind of educational bingo while they're there to kind of talk to other people, you know, that they have to come back and do a story time on or a story something on. But something that's gonna keep, kind of get them interested to keep coming back and to keep coming and engaging with them. The other one was you had a Super Bowl party, but have you ever thought about like an Oscar party? Where people could kind of dress up and really pick their favorite movie of the year or whatever, right? But then they can kind of get all fancy and have like a little red carpet and have some fun. So that way, the kids can kind of get involved, and then they could have that, again, that story time of, I remember my favorite movie was blah, 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 right? So really have some type of education and engagement around that, that may be kind of fun for them to do. Art night, I thought for that, for, is it maybe a photo album painting of each other? Versus just kind of, we've all gone to Paint Night, and they give you the photo, and you paint it, you go home and you never look at it again. But maybe it could be like a family kind of painting night. Maybe they bring an old family portrait, and they all try to repaint the family portrait, or something like that. So then they can hang it on their walls and laugh about it every Christmas about, you know, this is what we did, da-da-da-da. Or it becomes part of their storytelling history of, you know, I'm gonna paint my old grandfather. You know, something like that. So that history of the family, I think, can be involved into the Paint Night. Remember, you've done this before, but maybe like getting together and do like a family tree? So then you can pull in the 24 History and Me, all that stuff. Bring, they, they do kits now, where you can come and they can, they'll bring kits, and you can kind of, kind of do that DNA, kind of a fun, family fun thing. I think that kind of gets everybody involved in the family, and I think that said a lot, so.
Well, I'm glad this is being recorded, because all of your ideas were great. The 23 and Me, I'm gonna have to check in with the city attorney on that one, but the rest of it, I'm glad it's being recorded. Those are sensational ideas. And, and I'm glad, I mean, all of those were well orchestrated, and the objective for the lunch and bringing them back and all that. So I'm definitely gonna be re-watching, and thank you for your sentiments. But those were, those are expanding, and that's why we wanted to open it up, because you brought new light to ideas that are here and that we presented. And it's just, that's what brainstorming is, right? It's taking an idea and making it better, and I think you did just that, so thank you.
Excellent. Commissioner Witcher, any questions after this presentation?
Yes, thank you. And I hate to be the dull one, but I'll ask a dull question. What, what are the goals? That is, do you have a goal at the end of the, I think it's a five-year period? And can you give me an idea of a couple of the metrics and how you measure them?
It's not a dull question. First of all, that's a great question, because if you're gonna have an outcome, you want to be measurable.
That's exactly what I'm getting at.
Yes, no, no.
Shooting for.
We're on the same page. I think the overall answer to that question is, you know, to put it simply, is wellness for all parties involved. And, and to enhance the lives of everybody involved, and perhaps for those, and this goes along with enhancing their lives, you know, for them to gain a new perspective, to put it simply, in a very positive fashion that also promotes connection amongst the different generations.
I think the one thing I could see is obviously measurable is the amount of people that show up and want to keep coming. If we make it a program, like if we have it consistently, like, oh, the Oscars event happened this year, we had this amount, and then the following year, how many more people wanted to come back or what advice they had? That would be the big thing I'd look for. But it is a hard thing to measure happiness and how much that, and it is important though. I mean, that's why we're doing it, and that's why we want to do it. So I think the numbers is the best thing that I can think of, unless there's anything else to be added.
Well, I just would want to add to that, that our goal is to just be more intentional about making sure we're incorporating this type of programming into our events and such. And then trying to come up with some signature events, programs that will be ongoing after kind of the two-to-three-year trial, and making sure that we're continuing to measure participation and feedback from the community about it. Sometimes it's not always about the numbers, it's also about the quality as well, so, yeah.
Yeah, to piggyback, oftentimes, many organizations will, numbers, 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 right? But it, the quality, based on what, you know, to piggyback on what Joanne said is, how do we measure how effective it was in addition to the attendance, right? And so that's something we'd have to dive deeper into as far as surveying or focus groups or something like that to consider. But great question.
You know, and I think that trying to measure or index happiness or wellness is very slippery. Yeah, and I mean, it's difficult. And if you can find ways, you might be able to add to an important body of knowledge.
Yep.
And, and help beyond this city. Now, our American society is not great at honoring elders and that intergenerational connection. And so I think this is a fantastic, fantastic program. One suggestion, since it's intergenerational, there's, there's the, there are millennials and Gen X in there too, between the seniors and the youth. And a lot of these programs, I think, are opportunities where maybe the kid could bring a parent along too. Make it open and inviting for parents, so you could get not just two generations, but three, four, five generations involved, as, as that really reflects our city.
Absolutely. Great comment. Thank you. No, thank you. This is awesome.
Richard, now we're gonna hear from our youth commissioners. Let's start with Youth Commissioner Lee.
Thank you for your presentation. It's very meaningful. I think I would sort of like to hear more about the promotion process, like the target audience. Would be promoting this service individual new programs, or is it open to a global community?
Good question. Yeah, so we, we have some communication with the high schools through, actually, my Youth Activities Council. They're great about getting the flyers that they put together and sending it out. We're still working with the school districts to get more communication with them back and forth. But it's also through you guys, you know, you guys are part of the community, and that's a big part of it.
As far as marketing, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, as far as marketing goes, it's, it's something that I'm trying to understand and grasp, because social media and different generations, like, we can easily market to them. As far as seniors, one way I found that's successful, other than the seniors who attend our facilities and our programs, is marketing through their families. Because that, that promotes two things. One, it gets to the seniors. The other thing is it hits two generations at once, and then they both can come to some of the events that we mentioned. So I'm sorry, I cut you off. You had another question.
Also, I have a second question is, are you guys going to be taking, like, rolling ideas? Or we pre-plan, like, all activities and schedule?
I think right now, we're in the, in addition to the programs that we're offering, we're, we're accepting, we want input from everyone in order to expand, create, and enhance programs. So that's kind of where we're at this stage. So I know that's a simple, easy answer, but that's the answer, so.
And as we were, one of the big things that we advertise through is our activity guides. We're actually working on the spring slash summer guide, which is kind of crazy that we're in winter and working on that. But so a lot of the events that if we get approval for are really start to put time into. That's one of the big things we also advertise through.
I really appreciate those ideas. This, the plan ideas, I guess, are, I would like to actually suggest maybe some ideas for workshops, seniors can hold their own workshops, hobbies, I think. Appreciate, and we can share those hobbies. Also, some, the impact issue related to these individual events. Trash cleanups, or, I think I tend, when, while back at the Bay Frank cleanup, I saw many seniors, and, oh, I didn't even think that.
Yeah, they were.
So, it was really a bit.
Those are great suggestions.
And, you know, I've, I've been playing around with the idea of having like a hashtag adulting class, and, you know, maybe even seniors could help in teaching those classes, you know, so, be fun. Thank you.
Excellent. Let's hear from Youth Commissioner Jelnicar.
Okay, so I just want to say first, I love the ideas here. I love the purpose of the intergenerational community buildings. I, I have a question. Is there like a committee dedicated to this, like a planning committee?
Yeah, well, there's a loose one we have, that we have been working slowly on things, but I think as we fulfill more staffing, it'll become an even more filled committee, but that's definitely something that we have already.
And does it kind of cover like a wide range of age groups, or is?
Yeah, yeah, so with the, the current committee, it has someone on the senior center, someone that works with the youth, and, you know, all the parties involved. But I think maybe the middle ground age group is the one that we're missing, so we'll definitely keep on working on that.
And I had a question, or I wanted to hear more about one of your activities, the Wellness Fair. Can you do like a reiteration of it?
Sure. It's the first time we're bringing the, it used to be called the Health Fair. And the name is kind of unofficial at this point, but the idea is there. So the Wellness Fair, since it'll be the brought-backs, I believe the last time was pre-COVID, and I was working in a different department, in the same department, different section. I was in athletics at the time. So the date is slated for May 18th. And that's, it's going to, the idea, tentative idea, is that it is focused on seniors, but family kind of oriented. So families will bring their senior, or their senior will bring their family, vice versa. And there'll be activities for everyone, but it's about senior wellness. And that incorporates, you know, mental health, that incorporates exercise, nutrition, physical health, et cetera. And it's gonna be more interactive than perhaps previous health fairs where there was tabling, and you might have some different health organizations doing blood pressure checks, et cetera. The idea is to have presentations and kind of be a more interactive, again, senior-focused health fair, but involve the whole family.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, and with that, I'll, I'll ask a question or two. I'm curious if it's possible, and it's, maybe this is also a question you need to ask persona or someone from the city attorney's office, but, you know, there are so many of the recreational classes that we have where I could see some kind of model of, of sort of an intergenerational theme being applied that could really work. Like, for example, we have these great pottery classes that are offered through, through the department. And I'm wondering if it would be possible to reserve like half of the slots for people over a certain age, or half of the slots for people under a certain age, to kind of try to guarantee mixing? I'll, I'll say that I've taken several tennis club courses through the recreation department, and you start to see the same, you know, it's over the course of many weeks, and so you kind of get to know each other a little bit more. And so being able to take a class that you sign up for and you pay a little bit of money for, so it's a commitment, might be something to explore within this model. Again, I don't know if it's possible to, to sort of craft the slots that much. And if you know, I would, I'd be interested to know, but if you don't, you know, it's perfectly fine to, to take it back to whoever would need to check that out.
I believe it's possible. Joanne, I heard you here.
Yeah, no, I would just say ceramics is one of our more impacted courses and classes.
Maybe not ceramics then, but something.
No, I think that there could be opportunities for that, and we can definitely look into what makes most sense.
Okay, cool. The other thing too is anything that could be ongoing, I, I would really like to see, you know, the, the pen pal idea I thought, thought was great. But, but if we could think of some more ongoing activities as opposed to one-offs. And then I, I'm curious, at the very beginning, sort of the, sort of, first in the timeline or the second in the timeline was this AARP certification. Can either one of you tell us how we got that, or what it entails?
That happened prior to my arrival here, but I think the age-friendly cities, the AARP put, put out the bid for cities to become age-friendly, and so there was throughout, throughout the county of San Mateo, different cities started to put, put together their plans. And it's a five-year plan, it involves implementation of different projects, and then, you know, evaluation of those, and then after the five-year period, you come up with projects that have been completed, come off the docket, new projects come on. The theory behind this project is to make programming that becomes a part of the fabric of our offerings. So I think the intention behind some of what we're proposing is to start with one-offs to see if they take, and if they do, maybe make them, you know, seasonal programs or more ongoing. But this is really kind of the pilot gear of what we're trying to assess.
Great, that's super helpful. Excellent. Let's open it up for public comment. I'll remind everyone, if they're on Zoom, please use the raise your hand button, and you'll be called on. Or if you're in person, fill out a slip, and I will ask Giovanna, do we have any public comments? Maybe we'll give it a moment.
Thank you, Chair Fields. We do have members of the public, but no hands raised at this time.
Okay. I will ask my fellow commissioners if they have any additional comments. I know sometimes when I hear my fellow commissioner ask a question, I think of something else. So let's run down the list, perhaps in opposite order. Don't worry, youth commissioners, I will still come to you at the end. But let's hear from Commissioner Witcher first. Do you have any additional comments?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Excellent. Commissioner Trapp, any additional comments? None. Commissioner Kaapi, any additional comments? No? Vice Chair Wolnick?
Yes, I do.
I thought you might.
So first, when you were talking about the reading with the library, I really loved that idea. Our school does, through our PTA, does a reading buddies program to really target the kids that need the extra help. So if, I don't know, logistically through the library, but, you know, putting out a call to the schools to kind of identify the kids that need that, I think that would be a really good ongoing partnership. And then also, thinking about locations, I think, kind of hearing people talk about marketing and sort of what the goals of this are, is I think it's really important for this, these programs to be really visible. So I know logistically, it's gonna be easier in the senior center or in the places that the people already are, but maybe for some of them, thinking, I like the idea of going to Beresford Park, like having it out in the park, or like down on the pedestrian wall, or like make them a little bit more visible so that, you know, they pick up attendance next time, and people can see it out in the community, interacting. Like the cornhole tournament could definitely be anywhere, right? Yeah, there's some local recreation options that we can get to different parks, and so definitely appreciate that. Yeah. Okay, that's it for me.
Excellent. Youth Commissioner Jelnicar, any additional comments?
I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay, and Youth Commissioner Lee?
Yes, just adding on to comment later, yeah. I, I agree with the visibility. I think one part we should emphasize more is libraries. I should work at the library before, and they have many existing programs, I already said, which many of community members.
If you guys want to promote these programs, um, definitely, I think. It would be more visible at that.
Um, I'd also just like to echo that I think there could be a lot of fruitfulness in the library partnership. And I'll echo what, uh, Vice Chair Walnick was getting at in terms of thinking about. Locations across the whole of the city of San Mateo, and I'll even get a little more specific and say. Um, Bay Meadows Park is an excellent park, there are many young families and children nearby. Um, who mostly interact with other young families and children, um, so it'd be nice to kind of think about. Really accessing different parts of the city, um, for the use of this. I'll also say something perhaps a little bit more bold and say that there are a lot of generational divisions across the different adult generations. In the city of San Mateo, I don't, I didn't quite hear that that was a goal here, but, um. I think should after year one, we see some success with these programs. Thinking about sort of tackling some of the. Adult generational divides, um, could be something that, um, that could be very worthwhile, um, particularly as we see. Frankly, the the population of San Mateo, um. Really expanding in all directions. And so, uh, just sort of thinking about those those divisions and not just, um. Sort of the very young and the and the pretty old, um, but the in betweens as well as, um. I believe it was Commissioner Witcher had mentioned, um, so so we'd like to see that, and then just also, I'll say again. I'd really like to see some continuity eventually in these programs, um, but I understand that the one offs are sort of for this pilot year. Excellent, um, well, thank you, thank you to staff for this presentation, um, I think it was. Really excellent to hear from you and thinking about intergenerational connectivity. In our first meeting where we got to welcome our youth commissioners. So with that, I will say thank you yet again, and we can move on to item number six.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, um, we've been hearing from our arborist quite a bit lately. So, I, item number six, uh, protected tree administrative guidelines proposed revisions. Like I said, our our arborist, Matthew Freed, um, has a presentation for us.
And I'm going to tell you about some very simple revisions that we are. Planning to make to our protected tree administrative guidelines. You might be shocked. So the administrative guidelines are a companion document to our protected trees ordinance, you're writing an ordinance in. Sort of municipales, um, it's hard to convey certain ideas, it's hard to convey images in a, you know, municipal code. So this allows us to use other. Other other, uh, graphics, charts, things that just don't go well, uh, directly to the code, it also. Allows us, uh, to make some modifications, some sort of light duty modifications, uh, on the fly without full council. Uh, approval and revisions to the code. Uh, for the purpose of strengthening and clarifying anything in the code as. New, uh, court of cultural considerations, new regulations, new best management practices arise. Some of the important information that's contained in there are the requirements for. Uh, paying certain fees in certain situations and the reforestation requirements for protected tree removal. Those are what we're here to talk about today. We had an issue that came to us, which was, uh. Precipitated by a new. A new part of the fire code, so the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department. Uh, adopted something that came down from the state level that is now having them. Mandate the removal of. Dead trees that pose a fire hazard in immediate urgency to structures. So we had sort of a test case come in where somebody. Uh, got the the notice saying they had to remove the dead tree, and they came to get the permits that were required at the time. And they found out they had to pay a hundred and five dollars for the permit, and that they needed to replant a tree or forfeit. A deposit of four hundred and eighty three dollars. And they weren't pleased and. Ultimately, we just want to remove the barriers, costs and convenience to getting hazardous trees removed. So previously, even a dead tree, even a hazardous tree had a. Fee associated with it and. A replant requirement to replace it with a fifteen gallon tree or pay the annual fee of four hundred and eighty three dollars. So we had to come up with a solution for this crazy problem. And we found one, we decided that for, that what we would like to propose is that for any trees mandated for removal. Either by the fire department or code enforcement and they only mandate trees for removal based on safety and risk. Then we would waive all fees and replant requirements, making it free and, um. Less burdened some for somebody to remove. Uh, if you go to the next slide, this is the current, um, non-updated schedule. On the left is the dead trees and it doesn't matter. So, yeah, all dead trees still require a reforestation requirement and the payment of the annual fee. Not represented in this chart is that you also would pay a permit fee. Next slide shows the proposed changes. And really the top line. Is the only change, is the only material change, so removal mandated by fire or code enforcement. You would not have to replant a tree, you would not pay any monthly deposit and covered by, um. Chairperson Fields is, the little up there is the fee, you would also not pay a fee. So removal of a dead tree that is hazardous. Flammable will not cost you anything. That concludes my presentation.
Excellent, I'm sure you needed to go to forestry school for that. Okay, um. Do any of you have questions about? The arborist's presentation? Maybe you raise your hand if you have a question.
I have one.
There are some questions, excellent, um, let's see, I think I see Vice Chair Walnick's hand.
Yeah, um, so, okay, so I I I get the concept here, I'm just curious of the scale of. Trees we're thinking we're gonna lose in the urban forest here. Since the point of the ordinance is to keep the urban forest, so removing the requirement to like replace them. Are we gonna lose a lot of trees because of?
My anecdotal, uh. Estimation is you were talking about single digits of trees annually where these things are gonna happen.
Thank you. I haven't seen a question.
Understanding the sparsity that we're creating by removing of these dead trees is that the, um, and. So I do not know the proper terminology, but having the aesthetics of it being missing, the oxygen replacement or the environmental impact, anything. Is there an assessment? Is there need to be an assessment? Is there any? Any other, uh, similar sized population that have the same programs, things like that, I'm just curious.
Um, so just a reminder, the trees that are being removed through this free permit waving. Structure are dead trees, so they're all dead, so the tree coming out is dead and poses a hazard. And we're now waiting the requirement that you replace the dead tree with a new tree. That said, um, yeah, there's other cities do all kinds of different things, there's our, you know, in. San Mateo, in unincorporated San Mateo County right now, you don't need a permit to remove like. Black acacias, certain types of pines, anything in the five hundred species genus of eucalyptus. Um, because of their fire danger, and that's for the healthiest, most beautiful of those specimens. What we're doing is still comparatively, um, very conservative. And 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 you know, sort of an example situation that I'll call out where these where these things have come to our desk is when. People, no one's leaving a dead tree up there because they want to, you know, they're leaving a dead tree on their property and getting a notice for code enforcement with fire. Often because they don't have the immediate cash flow or resources to deal with this problem. And so by ass slapping on five hundred or six hundred bucks more, we're just complicating it and sort of. Incentivizing them to leave these dead trees and like the fire is one situation and and may affect, you know, houses up in the hills or whatever. But we have a lot of situations where there's, you know, homes in central or north central or just more populated areas. Where there'll be like three dead trees standing right against the side of the street. And we just want to do whatever we can to make it easy to mitigate those safety concerns.
So I'll ask my question differently because I'm not disagreeing with the fact that we should remove anything that's dead and we should not burden the homeowner or anyone on the property to remove that tree. Of course, we should just be able to wipe those out, um. What do we do in general to go around the city to see what we do now have these pockets of removals or pockets of holes where we used to have something that was providing. You know. Auction, whatever, do, is there an assessment for us that as as a whole to kind of as assess what's. Missing in our in our landscape now in the future?
Uh, no, there's no comprehensive like survey to look at canopy or to. There's nothing official or comprehensive to. Assess canopy, canopy loss, canopy gain, canopy change.
Commissioner Kaipe, any questions? Okay, Commissioner Witcher, any questions?
Uh, one is, uh, tangential, so I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but the next line item is. There's a hundred and five dollar permit fee to remove a dead tree from your property of of any size.
So then that is a typo, that's why I might sort of tripped up when I saw that, so with that, it's. Stated inaccurately, we have two classifications of protected trees, oaks ten inches or greater and then, um, any. Uh, any species fifteen inches or greater.
Right, heritage trees.
Correct. I think that that chart. Is in the context of the fees for protected tree removal. So if we're looking at that in line in the document where it exists, I would hope that it says. I mean, you're you're at that document because you're.
Yeah, I'm I'm looking at it.
But yeah, it should be, it should be.
So here it is.
Right, but that's not the.
Yeah, that's the, that's the red line, so that's in the document.
So it would be more clear to say. Dead trees and then you have to find a different modifier.
Dead heritage tree, any size.
Yes, it's a dead protected tree and these are. I think this is a table of protected trees, right, it's, these are, these are the fees and the replant requirements for protected trees.
Right.
So protected, so dead, dead tree and any protected trees, that's what they.
Right, I I see the context, um, and since this is going into, this comes an official document. Yeah, and so this is a red line to become an official document. The. Uh, table says, so the heritage trees, they start at ten inches and there is a line item, ten to thirty inches. And greater than thirty inches, and I'm kind of wondering, so why? A dead tree of any size, that could only mean less than ten inches. Because ten inches and above are covered. Yes, it is in a context of heritage trees, but technically there are no heritage trees that are under ten inches in size, so. Uh, it's created some confusion on my part.
Dead trees, ten inches or greater.
The second.
Be better.
Second two lines are live trees, right?
Yeah.
You just want to take out a tree that's ten to thirty inches, but it's not dead.
Oh, good, uh, so it could be any, uh. Any dead heritage tree. As opposed to dead any size.
Dead.
Proterific tree.
Yeah, I mean, there's, we've got to think about the the best way to make it clear, you know, because.
It could be just me.
Go back through the document to find what's heritage tree, but I get your point and we'll make sure to make it.
Still readable for folks like me, thank you.
Um, Matt, a a quick question, just to clarify, is there a difference between? A tree that is deemed, um. A like a fire hazard and a dead tree, or are they one in the same? They're different, right?
Yeah, they are, so if a tree is dead on your property and you come to the parks department to apply for a permit. On your own volition, without it being mandated, it's a safety hazard by the code enforcement or fire department. Then you're still on the hook for replacing that tree and paying fee. Those things waived if you have like an official notice of correction or whatever it's called from one of those two agencies.
And technically, a live tree could also be a fire hazard, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Those are all of my questions.
We're not, we're not seeing that.
Okay.
You know, yeah, but technically, yes, I'm not gonna argue that, we're not gonna argue that. The fire department deems it hazardous and and requires it's.
Right, um, sorry, do either of the youth commissioners, um, have any questions about this?
No question.
No question, okay, um, does anyone, is there any, um, sorry, I will open public comment, just as a reminder, if you're on Zoom, please, uh. Use the raise hand function, um, or if you're in person, use the comment card. Giovanna, do we have any public comment on this matter?
Uh, not at this time, Chair Fields.
Excellent, I will close public comment and return to the commission for any additional comments. Any of my fellow commissioners have any additional comments or points to clarify?
Oh, excellent.
Yes, I'll just say to wrap it up, I mean, we asked questions, but I think this makes sense.
Excellent, um, I'll also just remind everyone, this is informational, there is no, um, uh, action necessary on this. And, uh, unless any of my other commissioners have any additional comments. Um, I think we will say thank you to the arborist, Matt, always a pleasure, um, and. Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent, um, and with that, reports and announcements. Joanne?
Yes, thank you, um, I wanted to share with you some photos of some of the events that we had in December since we did meet. Um, so, um, just wanted to show you that we had our winter wonderland event, um, in early December and, um. We were not shut down by the rain, no one rained on our parade, and so it was a. Great event, we had, we brought in snow, there were jump houses, it was indoor outdoor, um, free hot chocolate, which was delicious. Um, and so it was just a really great event, um, that we had, um, for the community. And the next event was our, um, police activities league Santa brunch, and that was held at Art King Center. Um, as you can see, Santa and Mrs. Claus arrived and were there and we, um, had a breakfast as well as, um, our arts and crafts and, um. A toy giveaway, so it's a really great event, um, and then our following that, we had our Santa cop event, um, where we delivered, um. Treats and, um, gifts to families, um, and, uh, that was done by our our police activities league as well, um, on the Monday. Prior to the holiday, and then we also had our fallen heroes memorial groundbreaking event, um. Which again, not to be outdone by the rain, um, on December nineteenth, so it was a very busy December. But we were, uh, able to do the groundbreaking ceremony and construction started the day after on the twentieth with the fencing going up, so. Um, we're looking forward to doing a ribbon cutting in the spring, um, for that, um. Uh, construction project, so very exciting things happening in December, so just wanted to let everybody know about that. That's all I had.
Excellent, um, do any of my fellow commissioners have? Any kind of announcements or community happenings they would like to share? Today? Looks like I'm seeing none, um, and so with that, I will say thank you, everyone, for. Yet another lovely meeting and let's. Let's adjourn.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Don't leave, I need a photo. I will get.